Ask me?
Yes.
Okay.
I was thinking. I didn't see the letter from the lawyer. It was online. You had it online. It's not in the packet, right?
I sent it to you by email because it's privileged?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Are we going to be able to hear you today, Paul?
Hey Mayor, how do you hear?
I hear you really well.
Great.
Paul, am I able to hear you?
Hello?
Can you hear him?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay, I can move around.
Or get closer. I don't know which.
Yeah.
Are you too close?
I don't know. How close can I get?
I don't know. Yeah, but all I can see is your chin.
There we go.
There you go. How's that sound? I hate for Brian to have to move the mic around all the time.
Well, only twice. We got one public comment. And then Paul's got it.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Great. Brian, I saw your email about opening them up. I think that's a good idea. Okay. My speaker's not working. I'm gonna have to log out and go back in.
I can hear you, but it's scratchy.
I don't know why. I'm gonna log out and log back in. Okay, so. So can you hear me now, Jackie?
Mayor, did you have a question?
Can you hear me now? I was my on my I lost my microphone.
I can hear you just fine. Yep.
Okay, I won't worry about them. Close the window. Shut out the train. Almost there.
Mayor, I've got 1900 straight up and it looks like all the council is dialed in.
Yeah, it does to me, too. I think everybody's here. Just before we get started and actually call to order, I'll remind everybody that it's important to keep your mics muted. Counselors, you're welcome to keep your mic on. But if we hear too much feedback, we'll just open and close as you can as you do your own. Those who are visiting with us via audiovisual, I just remind you that this is a business meeting. That public comment is allowed during the public comment sessions. But no other commentary is allowed at all. So please keep your mics muted unless you've been recognized to speak. So with that, let's call to order the City Council meeting of May 7th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via audio video teleconference. All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Brian, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Brian? Continue and call the roll, please, or Jackie?
Yeah, we have Jackie dialed in. So Jackie, can you call the roll?
Great.
Mayor Holston?
Here.
Counselor McClelland?
Here.
Counselor Whitney?
Here.
Counselor Forcome?
Here.
Counselor Maxfield?
Here.
Counselor Kenyon?
Here.
Counselor Hollitt?
Here.
We also need to be there. Kenyon, will you again just use your mic because you sounded really far off? I want to make sure that we can hear you well.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go. You're just very soft. Thank you. All right. So additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? I have business to add to the City Council. Business, the City Council, I'd like to add a discussion about business licenses. At that time, so that'll be 10.1. Anybody have any additions, corrections, or adjustments?
Mayor, it's the City of Mid, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think that would be 9.2. Oh, you're right. Thanks, Chrissy. Thank you. That would be 9.2.
Mayor, it's the city administrator. I have an item.
Okay, go ahead.
It's 10.1.3 and the title is Franklin Boulevard Opportunity Zone Corridor Build Application Support.
Franklin Boulevard Support, okay. Any other additions, corrections, or changes to the agenda? I don't see any requests there. Let me get our participants. Counselors, so I've got the participant list up here and I will watch for the raised hands. But don't be afraid to point out that your hand has been raised, too. We will go to public comment. Brian, do we have any public comment?
We have an in-person comment here. I'll shift the camera momentarily.
Okay. Welcome. I can't hear.
Can you come closer? Can you hear that, Mayor?
I can't hear anything yet.
Okay, one sec. Let me check the video and the audio.
Yeah.
She just can't hear you right now. Right now. Try again.
I can hear you comment on the item of sensor.
I can hear you now. Go ahead. Just identify yourself and give us your address. Go ahead, Lauren.
Oh, Mayor, I'm only here to comment on the item of sensor.
Do you want to wait till your public comments during that time?
Yeah, till that time.
Okay, perfect. We'll follow you again. Is there anybody that is dialed in? I see an X. I see a Dan Barclay and some other Galaxy GVA. Is there anybody who is on make a comment? If so, please unmute yourself and we'll see it. I'll wait. I don't see anybody. Okay, then let's move on. Let's move on to Mayor's comments, announcements, and proclamations. So I have a few things here. We have a proclamation. And I have some comments, too. So first of all, I just want to thank members of the faith community. It is National Day of Prayer. They requested permission to gather and pray at City Hall today at noon. And thank you staff for making that possible for them to do that. And affording them directions and a place that would be safe in which to pray for our community, our state, our nation, and our world. Also, just remind everybody that there is a public hearing at 6:00 PM on May 21st. You all hear more about that, of course, but that's to be put on your calendars. And that's for the business discussion. And other than, and I think, you know, I have some other comments about what's going on with COVID, but I know Brian does, too. So I think we'll just wait till Brian does his city administrator comments. And then we can all talk about where we are with that and what's happening in the county and what we can expect to happen in the city coming up. So for the, and let's move on to proclamations. This is also Mental Health Month. And so the city is joining in that proclamation of May 2020 as Mental Health Month. And according to that, I will read this proclamation aloud. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas promotion and intervention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there is a strong body of research that support user-friendly tools. That all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas the mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, faith organization, healthcare provider, veteran groups, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas Lane County, as well as the nation as a whole, is going through an infectious disease outbreak. It is important to remember that feeling anxious, confused, overwhelmed, or powerless is a very common and quite normal death. By staying connected with loved ones and staying active, we can maintain our mental health as we try to protect our physical health. Therefore, I, Mayor Kathy Holston, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Month to the city of Oak Ridge. As the mayor of Oak Ridge, I also call upon the citizens, the government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Oak Ridge to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. It is hereby proclaimed. And that will be available on the website, too, for you to see. And I have, oh, I also wanted to point out, if you haven't seen it, on East First, there is a speed sign. Your speed is. If you've seen it, that's great. If you haven't, I don't know that it's operating right now. But it was fixed by inbound, I believe. Is that right, Brian?
Yes, ma'am. Dylan fixed it and we've, the chief has charged it up and we're moving it around the city.
Yeah, so a big thank you to Dylan and inbound. And I will send him a note of thanks for his efforts toward helping the city stay safe. So if you see him, pat him on the back, say hello, or don't pat him on the back, touch him on the elbow or stand six feet away. But say thank you. So that's good to know. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda number eight. We have a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Was that you, Chrissy?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Signify by saying nay. There are no nays. It passes unanimously. Let's move on to business from the City Council. 9.1, Chrissy. Dawn, did you have something to say?
Yes, please. There was a number seven council comments. I wanted to.
Oh, I skipped right over. Absolutely. My apologies. Council comments and announcements. Dawn, go ahead, since you've indicated you have council comments.
Thank you. I was just curious where we stand on the annual review of the county judge and the city administrator. And I also am curious about the status of our county judge. Like he was supposed to be gone for three months and what's the?
Good question.
Answer to the last part of that question, the city administrator here. As you may know, we've actually canceled municipal court for the months of April and May and still yet to be determined in June. However, more directly to your question, Judge Segarra has still not returned. And I've, I'm reaching out to him to figure out what his status is, but I honestly, I have not spoken with him.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Dawn. As far as the status of it, of the annual review, other than the last two meetings that we've had, we haven't really moved ahead any further on that. I think part of that was waiting to see what was going to happen with the judge also. But we should probably get that back on the burner and start looking at it some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other council comments or announcements?
I have a couple. So there's a few things I was wondering about. One was regarding the literature of record, if we've ever gotten, if we've gotten much further with that. And where we are with that. And then to see if Chrissy has an update regarding the water tower and painting that. And then a couple months back, or however long it's been, and we were supposed to get a resolution for for charging for non-transports through our EMS program. And then also, our attorney was supposed to research Resolution 873 to include drug penalties or other pertinent citations. And I don't know if that's ever happened or where we are with that. And then we had talked about short-term rentals and what we can do with that. And I don't think we've, that's come back around. And then I have something that I would really like to propose. I think it would be helpful with all of our budget issues to really look at some library fees. And what we can do with that. I'd ask Georgie some information. I have to go find my email, but we have about 600 people that have library cards in the city limits and we don't charge a fee. But we do charge a small fee for people from outside city limits. But I think it would be helpful to get an agenda bill with some proposals of what we can do regarding the library to help make that a little more self-sustainable. So I'm wondering if everybody would agree to getting some sort of agenda bill regarding that?
I certainly would would agree to getting more information and accept that as an item for the agenda.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else?
I wouldn't.
How does the rest of council feel about that?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Is there anybody opposed to that? Let me ask it that way, since we're on squares. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. And that was all I had. I know it was a handful of stuff, but.
And one thing to add to that is an update on, I'd like at some point to have an update on neighborhood watch. You did a good job of listing stuff, Bobby. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think, Bobby, you may have missed what Chrissy said at our last meeting about the water tower. I'm not sure because I know you were in and out. And I know Chrissy had some updates on the water tower. Did you hear the last meeting? Okay, would you?
So after our last meeting, I sent an email to George, letting him know our discussion about opening it up. Asking if he would be interested in painting it a blank slate color and then opening it up to talent in our community. We kind of went back and forth and talked about different points. And he was concerned about the timeliness of council getting back to him because the paint that he is hoping to buy, I believe, is at some type of discounted price. So the longer we wait, the opportunity fades away for him. However, he was fine with working, doing a blank slate and painting it and then waiting on the design. That didn't seem to be a problem. I think the real thing was just that he wanted to hurry up and get the project going.
Okay. Sounds like that's a little more.
It's about the same. It's about the same, but I do think that it would be wise of council to discuss, you know, how we want to do that. how we want to do that quickly because I think the opportunity is probably fading away for George. And painting it, getting it a solid color would be nice. You know, especially with everything going on right now. It's a good time of year to get that done. So I would love for us to have more dialogue regarding that.
Brian, do you have anything to add to that? I know you had had some communication with him too.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me on this on this mic?
I can hear you.
So George has decided, at least tentatively, that he's not going to take on this project and head it up. He thinks it's a city project. And if it does become a city project, he is more than happy to volunteer. But he has, he doesn't really want to lead this project anymore.
Is this then something we're just going to add to the docket for city, you know, public works? And when we get to it, we'll reach out to George? How do you want to handle that? What would be your suggestion, Brian?
I would say if you wanted to use TRT funds, we could do that and use public works labor. But if that was the intent of council to use those funds, and if that, if they do have that intent, then I would reach out to George for help with the help with public works and we have to get the lift and everything else.
So then it just rests on us to say it's that to agree that we would like to have paint the water tower with a blank slate and or not. I mean, I guess we have to decide that too. And then and then you'll put it on the docket for getting it done?
Yes, ma'am. If that's a priority for council.
Okay, so council, if we can just like clear this off the list now. I think two of the questions is, first of all, do we want to do this? And second of all, if we do want to do this, do we want to just pursue putting a blank slate there so that we can put a a generic welcome to Oak Ridge or a more a more esoteric mural or design in the future? So I would ask council first, do you agree that you want to use TRT funds to to refurbish and or to repaint the tower on Highway fifty-eight?
So I have a question about that. Is that-
I do.
Is that something that we're supposed to use for TRT funds for things along the highway? I mean, I realize we do the five hundred dollar block grants, but this is going to be a little bit more than five hundred dollars. So is this type of project something that falls within that tourism-type genre? I just want to make sure we're following the guidelines.
Well, right now there are-
I feel it is, but I'm open to discussion.
The CA, I know that we dealt with the RTMP sort of process and criteria, but it's still an open-ended subject on the TRT distribution. So I would say that right now there are no specific guidelines other than the storefront except for, you know, the block grant for five hundred dollars. We never moved on TRT at all.
Okay, because we didn't finish the Congress on did we want to change the parameters of TRT. We agreed that we wanted to keep the five hundred dollar block grant available for businesses on fifty-eight to or in town to beautify on a reimbursement basis. But I, but we haven't gone through and specified and put any parameters around how we use TRT funds and and what they can and cannot be used for. So then I guess we're not ready to do that until we can have that discussion. I just hate to push it off too much longer.
Agreed.
I I actually don't agree. I feel like we do know that we can use these funds. We've discussed it enough in the past. And and it does impact tourism and what people see when they come through our town. So I am very comfortable with using TRT funds to buy the paint. Maybe George is willing to buy the paint at the discounted price for us if he has that available still. And then use TRT funds for that and then have public works painted. I've seen them. They have some equipment that allows them to get to high places. So maybe that's something they can use to help them paint it. And I personally know that you have a person that works for the city that used to be an auto body painter, so put him to work.
Counselors, what do you think? Are you comfortable with with using funds? Dawn, go ahead. I see your hand.
I am comfortable. And if we're uncomfortable with the idea that we have the ability to focus the the design on something that is welcoming to tourism. We can put that parameter into the the contest or whatever to come up with different designs and and just tell people it has to be focused towards welcoming people to the community and area.
I like that. Any other counselors? I heard I agree with Chrissy. Okay. Okay. So let's see, I haven't heard from Tricia and I haven't heard from Dawn.
I'm comfortable with using TRT for the water tower.
Did you say you're comfortable or uncomfortable?
I am comfortable and I love the idea.
Okay, wonderful. Dawn? Would you like to weigh in?
I was wanting to mention that I believe the last step was that it was either a subcommittee or I think Tricia, Kathy, and John were going to work on some kind of development of TRT rules specifically some-
Right.
...station.
Right, exactly.
So are are we all confident that we want to move forward without those rules being in place?
I am. I I feel like it's important to continue moving forward, even though we know that that's what we want to look at. It's just like anything else, you know, we've gone through a lot of processes of using RTMP funds, or TRT and RTMP funds over the years. And I think I think it's fine to use it for this. I think this is just moving forward, doing something positive for the community now, knowing that we're going to be looking at this further. I don't think we should stop progress and stop moving forward and wait for that to happen when it could be a while before that happens. And I just I just would hate to see us stop moving forward for that when we know that this would really fit within the scope of what the intent is for a lot of those funds as they've traditionally been.
I also think it's important to note, a lot of events aren't happening this year, so that pot of money is it's not diminishing quickly.
That's a good point.
So how much would we be allocating to this project? And would it be specifically George doing the project or the city doing the project?
The city, this is the CA. The city, according to George, he wants the city to lead the project. He is still going to contribute his labor and any assistance he can in obtaining the paint and all that. And I would rely primarily on volunteer labor because once you start throwing in public works labor, it gets expensive for the city. So I would ask for volunteers that want to help. And I know that we have a handful already to defray the cost from public works, just, you know, public works would like maybe be a lift and that kind of thing. But other than that, very minimal city labor.
Did you say you had a cost?
No, you caught me by surprise with the tower, so I don't have George's TRT request or RTMP request, so I will- get back to-
I think it was around fifteen hundred dollars in his last request, around that ballpark.
Yeah, but that included renting a lift.
True. So yeah, we could figure it might be less.
So perhaps we can go ahead and approve that the city administrator move ahead with getting the water tower painted with the assistance of volunteers and incorporating Mr. Custer's offer for for getting paint and put a cap at fifteen hundred dollars and if it exceeds that to come back?
Yes, I would agree with that.
So-
I can make a motion.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Um, I make a motion to allow the city administrator to use TRT funds up to fifteen hundred dollars to paint the water tower a blank slate with the intent to later solicit local artists to paint the tower.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, if no discussion, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hollit?
Aye.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor McClelland?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, everybody. So let's go back to Realtor of Record. Do we have any update on that? Have we gotten any responses to our request for Realtor of Record, RFP?
There were zero packages turned in for the Realtor of Record.
Okay.
Even though I did have several inquiries in becoming the Realtor of Record, they did not submit a package. I'm going to come to council with a plan which involves our local Realtors and see if, how they like that. And then I'd like to at least get together with them when we are able to to kind of get a consensus and some advice.
Okay, so that's for a that's for a future agenda then.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And short-term rentals, we all agree that we wanted to have that discussion. So it looks like this probably isn't going to happen until summertime to talk about the short-term rentals. Right now, it seems like a strange time. Everything seems strange right now. So let's let's put that on one of the agendas for June or July. And you wanted to talk about the library and looking at maybe charging for for library cards. So do you want to bring that back to a future agenda with some information that the CA can put together about how much it would, how many people that would impact, how much it would bring in and et cetera?
Yes.
Okay, so are you okay with that, Bobby, to put it on and bring it back to us in the next, you know, couple couple meetings?
Yeah, I can do that.
Chrissy, did you want to say something?
I just, I guess I feel like I don't need a lot of research. I think it's completely reasonable to ask a ten-dollar membership fee for a library. I just, that's completely reasonable to me. I hate to overload Brian with unnecessary data and research that-
Okay.
I guess, I, sorry, not to offend anybody, it just seems extremely reasonable.
No, I appreciate your eagerness to move it forward. And so then the question would be, is it ten dollars for an adult? Is it ten dollars for a family? Is it five dollars for our children? Are children free? So there's all those little particulars. So maybe we can, maybe we can work that out and bring something back for us to look at because I think we need to think about those things too.
Yeah, I would agree.
Senior discount? I don't know.
And I have to say-
Don't give too many senior discounts.
Yeah. And what I have to say, what Chrissy just said is what my original thought was. And then I just kept thinking and thinking and thinking about it. And I thought, oh, maybe I need to be a little more practical. I don't know, but that was my original thought.
All right.
Let's get this done and do something else.
It would be nice to see what other cities charge.
Okay, so let's not put this on Brian's lap. Maybe Chrissy and Bobby, can you just kind of look around and bring something back to us? That says, this is what other cities do and we suggest you do X, Y, Z.
I would be happy to help.
Awesome.
What I've got from the CA is I'm looking into the fact that since they are a member of the Lane County Community Libraries, that there may be a regulation against targeting locals' residents for a fee. So I'm still looking into that, but other than that, we press ahead with it.
Great. So if I found anything out pertinent that would put us off to our inquiry, then will you let Chrissy and Bobby know?
Absolutely.
That sounds great. Okay, let's move on with that. And Neighborhood Watch, can I get an update on where we are with Neighborhood Watch? I've seen absolutely nothing out there about it. So I don't know whether we're in motion or not.
I'll, the chief of police has a presentation here later on on this agenda. And if he has an update, I'll ask him to do it then. Or if he needs more time to come back to you, I will let you know.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. And and the resolution for non-transports that Bobby brought up, is that a, I believe, is it a resolution that we need to do and is it something you're still working on? And I'm assuming you are because that's part of the budgeting process.
Still working on it. It took kind of a little bit of a backseat because as we looked at the possible revenue from it, it really became kind of minor revenue. But I am still looking at it and it's worth going after, even if it is a little bit of revenue.
Okay, so that's ongoing. And then Bobby, you brought up Resolution eight seventy-three to include drug penalties. And there was a discussion about that a while back. And Chief, I don't know whether this was going to go to the attorney to work with. And we just want to find out if that's still going on.
I'll again let the chief of police comment during his review.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys. Is there any other council come, council comment before we move into business from the council? Okay, so let's move into nine point one. Chrissy, the floor is yours. And you're muted, hon.
Brian, I'm going to go ahead and read the nine point one censure motion.
Okay, this is nine point one and it's a motion to censure hearing. The proposed council action is to consider charges against a council member. The exhibits that were included were a statement of charges, excerpt from the Rules of Procedure concerning censure, a rebuttal by the charged council member. And there was a legal opinion that was sent separate correspondence that you all should have gotten the same day that I sent the this out. The issue is censure. Any council member who violates any general law or regulation and any rule, law, ordinance, or resolution of the City of Oak Ridge may be reprimanded through the administration of a public censure of the member by the council. Such censure may be in addition to any other lawful action or punishable applicable to the violation, punishment applicable to the violation. For purpose of this section, censure shall mean the adoption of a resolution setting forth a formal statement of disapproval of a council member's conduct. The fiscal impact of this effort was five hundred and thirteen dollars, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Estimate is the legal bill for the advice that we received. And my time so far is up to a hundred ninety dollars. Options are motion to censure or do not make a motion to censure. And the motion is before you.
All right, thank you, Brian. So the first thing we have up is nine point one point one. It is the reading of the charges initiating council member, so which I will move to Councilwoman Kenyon.
So you're wanting me to read the whole censure document?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I think that's nine point one point two. But yes.
Oh, okay, so this is a notice of motion for censure. Statement of charges against Mayor Kathy Holston. The designation of the specific rule, law, regulation, et cetera, which the members claim to have been violated is from chapter five of our charter, Towers and Duties of Officers, specifically section nineteen. It says, "The mayor shall appoint the committees provided by rules of the council. The mayor shall sign all approvals of proceedings of the council. The mayor shall have no veto power and shall sign all ordinances passed by the council within three days after its passing. Upon approval of the council, the mayor shall endorse all bonds of the officers and all bonds or licenses, contracts and proposals, and countersign all orders of the treasury. The date, place, and time which the violation occurred." I included a little clip of the amendment number two, which we addressed in March of this year. And it says in there that which we addressed in March of this year, and it says in there that "The State of Oregon, acting by and through its Department of Transportation, here and after, referred to as ODOT or Agency, and the City of Oak Ridge, here and after, referred to as City, entered into an intergovernmental agreement on July 20, 2018, and Amendment Number 1, on December 20, 2019, collectively agreement. Said agreement covers a transportation and growth management grant for the City of Oak Ridge Transportation System Plan. I highlighted the Amendment Number 1 on December 20, 2019, in that section. The description of the conduct for the member which is alleged to constitute the violation. On March 22, 2020, I was reviewing our packet for the upcoming meeting on March 24, and noticed in Agenda Item 10.6.1, the following. In asking for council approval to pass Amendment Number 2, it states that Amendment Number 1 was signed in December. See the highlighted clip above. I did not remember this topic coming to council, so I started to look. We had a meeting on December 19, 2020. I have reviewed the packet from that meeting, the minutes from that meeting, and the minutes from the three prior meetings. There were no items on the agenda or items added to the agenda for the council to review and vote on Amendment Number 1 in any of those meetings. Yet Amendment Number 1 was signed on December 20, 2019. On March 22, 2020, I requested a copy of the original contract and a copy of the Amendment Number 1. I've since received the amendment document, and Kathy Holston, our mayor, did sign it without council approval, which is a violation of our charter. I will insert the signed page here and attach the entire document separately, and I did that. Put the attachment in there. I still haven't received a copy of the original contact. I'm very concerned about this council upholding the charter. Wait, I read that wrong. I'm very concerned about this council upholding the charter that our citizens have enacted. Earlier this year, I specifically asked the mayor during a council meeting to refrain from signing any more contracts without council approval, learning only a couple of months later that this had happened. How many other contracts may, have gone through the mayor's desk without being brought to the council? The only way the council can act as, as a body is if we all work together. The mayor's not authorized to act on her own. Our council rules line out the process for censure, and I am requesting to invoke those processes. Don Kenyon submitted for 27, 2020.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. I think if I'm reading this correctly, we're going to go on to 9.1.3, and that would be the charged council member's rebuttal.
Unless there are witnesses by Counselor Kenyon to be presented.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Well, the only witness I could think of was actually Counselor Hollitt in regards to a statement that was made about the Amendment Number 2 referring.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, at one point, this topic came up in council, and Counselor Kenyon asked me if I knew what the amendment was. And I had stated that Mayor Holston had called me and asked about if we needed to have a council meeting regarding the signature and approval for that amendment. And in our discussion, Mayor Holston acknowledged that we needed council approval for that before the signature. And this was during the timeframe after the social distancing occurred, and we were kind of in that limbo stage of when to have a meeting. And I believe in our Kathy and I's discussion, we discussed having a simple, special meeting to make sure that that amendment got signed. And my impression was that, when we spoke, that it was our understanding that those amendments had to be approved by council before the mayor could sign them.
Thank you.
Is there any other witnesses?
No, I don't have any.
So on to 9.1.3, charged council member rebuttal. Mayor Holston?
There you go. Yeah, so I think council received my rebuttal in writing. First, I'll speak to what Chrissy just said, and that was, this was in regards to the Second Amendment, not to the First Amendment. And as you have read some of the material backing up what I have said, as well as the legal opinion indicating that this was an amendment, this did not change the number or the value of the thing. It did not commit the city to anything further. It changed the name of our city administrator so that it was correct, and it changed the number that ODOT received, the amount of money ODOT received to reflect the correct amount, because it got a little bit more than they anticipated. And so it was, there was nothing that changed anything that the city itself was committed to. In calling Chrissy Hollitt about the other, Counselor Hollitt, about the Second Amendment, because it had a change in the date, I thought that it might be important, and I went and put on that. And therefore, I reached out to find that out. I will read my rebuttal, even though I know you've all read it, but I will read it for the record. On December 19, 2019, I signed an amendment to the TGM Grant Agreement. At the time of the signing, I looked to see if this obligated the city in any way that the city council had not already approved. After determining that this did not change our obligation, and was indeed a correction to the name of the administrator, Gomez to Kutchin, and a correction to a dollar figure which had no impact on the obligation from the city, I signed the agreement as mayor of Oak Ridge. The original was signed by the then-acting mayor Judy Rowland. Further as evidence of my due diligence, when signing documents, when the Second Amendment came forward to extend recently, I referred this to council for approval, as I determined. And yes, I determined that, because I thought about it and came to a conclusion, that extending the length of the contract was a step that needed council approval. I understand the importance of the charter, and I swore to uphold the charter, and I continue to do so to the best of my ability. In responding to this, I hold no grievance regarding questioning my authority as mayor to sign the document. We all do that, and we need to ask questions. But do point out that this could easily have been discussed if there wasn't this undercurrent of mistrust that I consistently see from council opinion. However, what I must address is also the continuation of my counsel opinion. I'd be signing documents on behalf of the city that are nefarious, or not in the best interest of the city, or somehow illegal or unethical. I think this is insulting and, to me personally, offensive. Additionally, her statement that specifically asked the mayor not to sign the further, any further contracts is insulting, showing a lack of understanding about public service and her role as a counselor, as she alone doesn't hold the power to direct the mayor, any mayor, or the counselor, any counselor. And I ask for an apology for both of those. The city administrator referred this motion to censure to the city attorney. This is important, because it affects how we perceive the duties and responsibilities of the elected position of mayor for Oak Ridge, and brings clarity to current and future mayors, city councilors, and city administrators. I would ask the council, based on our attorney's review, and on my statements, and some further ones, to deny this motion for censure. So one of the things I want to point out is that, we all know that our charter is, I think we can use archaic, the word archaic in many ways, the language is old, and it is unclear. We all recognize that, and have acknowledged that in the future, we do want to review our charter, bring it up to date, make it clear, and this is one of those areas that probably needs clarity. I will point out that I think it's extremely unfair to censure someone based on what the rules, what our charter says now that is unclear, and on what you think it should say, and how you interpret it for the future. I think that is totally unfair. In addition, I want to point out that our Rules of Censure access, an opportunity to be given to, to the individual that is upper center to correct it. I initiated that with Dawn by phone call. When I spoke to her on the phone, we did not come to an agreement, and she agreed that she, actually on the phone, she didn't, she was going to think about it, and she later decided to continue with the censure. I pointed out at that time that I really felt that this was personal, that I was, felt that I was being targeted, and I gave her the opportunity to explain why this was so important. She didn't take that opportunity. She was silent on that matter. I also asked her if this really wasn't just about the, the, the unclear language in our charter, and that really, that's what this was about, because in my opinion, I don't believe I did anything wrong. I believe it's well within my right to do this, and that in the future, when we change the charter, perhaps we will have structure to this. And as pointed out in the attorney's opinion, he gave an example of how we could add language to further contracts if we decided to put stricter parameters around that. And I think that's something that we may want to be doing in the future. So I feel like I'm being targeted for one. I think I'm being asked to adhere to that arm in writing. And I think it's, it's, I think it, it reflects poorly on our government and on the office of the mayor to insinuate that the mayor is trying to sign or do things that are not in the best interest of the city. I've worked hard to do this, and I feel like every time I turn around, that while I like to be corrected, and I would point out that Dawn just said I don't, but I do, I don't like to be put in a position of having to determine my character. And it's true very much, but that's what she has done here. When I asked for apology, she was silent. So I would ask you not to censure me. Oh, one more thing. The attorney's opinion is not public record. I would ask the council, that the council take a moment to consider reverting that opinion into the public record so that it could be discussed, because we really cannot be discussed in public at this point.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um.
Can I, are we ready for comments?
Yeah, so if Kathy doesn't have any witnesses, we'll go into 9.1.4, which is public comment in favor or opposed.
Can I, can I reject here just for a moment? I really think it's important, thank you. I really think it's important that we determine as a council whether or not we want to release the attorney's opinion for public record, because it, it hampers my ability to respond because of what was said there. And I can't, I can't use it as a defense, nor does the public know what was said.
I would agree, Kathy. I think anytime we, okay. I was going to say, Kathy, I would agree, anytime I think we can make attorney's information public, it should be transparent to the public. I am curious, though, if we should be discussing that in council member comments or in the rebuttal section?
I believe that hence, the public would like to know everything about the situation, that it should be open and read now for public comment.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion, we open that up, the attorneys.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, legal, attorneys.
Okay, okay, Counselor Kenyon, second to that. Can we call for the vote, or, excuse me, can we have discussion?
No, we do need to call for a vote with a motion on the floor.
I was asking if there was any discussion before the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we have, we have a motion with a second. If there's not any discussion regarding it, we can go straight to the vote. Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Yeah. Counselor McClelland?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye. Is that motion behalf?
Yes.
So Mayor Holston, I think we can go back to you, and you can disclose information in that attorney opinion.
Okay, so if, if it would be okay, I would just like to read it. I think that makes the most, the most sense, so that the public is aware of it. So this is a memorandum from our attorneys for the City of Oak Ridge, and it was addressed to myself and all of the counselors and the city administrator. It was from specifically Matt Dollstrom and Joe Leahy regarding the legal review of motion to censure, and it was dated April 29, 2020. Background, council opinion submitted a motion to censure Mayor Holston. The motion states that Mayor Holston violated Section 19 of the Oak Ridge City Charter by signing an amendment to a transportation system plan with the State of Oregon. Please see the attached motion to censure and the Transportation Plan Amendment for full details. Question, did Mayor Holston violate Section 19 of the Oak Ridge City Charter by signing the above referenced amendment? The short answer, no. It is our legal opinion that Mayor Holston did not violate Section 19 of the Oak Ridge City Charter by signing the amendment. Analysis, we recommend denial of the motion to censure. Under the newly adopted council rules, a censure requires a violation of a law, a regulation, a rule, or an ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge. The motion alleges the mayor violated Section 19 of the Charter, which provides, mayor, the mayor shall appoint the committees provided by rules of the council. The mayor shall sign all approvals, records of proceedings of the council. The mayor shall have no veto power and shall sign all ordinances passed by the council within three days after its passing. Upon the approval of the council, comma, the mayor shall endorse all bonds of city officers and all bonds for licenses, comma, contracts, comma, and proposals, comma, and countersign all orders of the treasury, quote. Section 19 of the Charter has caused confusion previously regarding the mayor's role in executing contracts. Our office has previously delivered opinions on the implications of this section, as did the previous legal counsel. The opinions of our office and the previous counsel regarding Section 19 are consistent. As it relates to the amendment at issue, nothing within Section 19 requires state council, excuse me, requires city council approval prior to the mayor signing this amendment. The reference to council approval, in the final sentence, refers only to bonds and orders of the treasury. Therefore, we do not believe the mayor violated Section 19 of the Charter without a violation of law, regulation, rule, or order. There is insufficient grounds for censure on council rules. Conclusion, based on the foregoing analysis, we conclude Mayor Holston not violated Section 19 of the City Charter, and therefore, the motion to censure should be denied. Additional considerations, the above analysis comprises the primary legal reason for our commendation of denial. But we also believe the context of the amendment is, the amendment is a change to the statement of work and identity of the city project manager of a previously council-approved intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Oregon Department of Transportation, or ODOT. Traditionally, a contract amendment of this variety is the type that would be routine for city staff to review and mark for approval, unless there are large deviations from the previous contract or additional financial impacts requiring city council approval. The amendment did not implicate any additional spending for the city. The original agreement concerned a grant amount of $149,700, with the city matching amount of $24,700, which constituted 14.16% of the total project. The amendment increased the grant amount to $151,700 and did not change the city matching amount, with lowered the percentage of the state contribution to 14% of the total project, as the contract was previously approved and the project was budgeted for expense. The amendment did not implicate a necessary approval for the city council. The city council should keep in mind the delegation of authority for day-to-day operation of the city government to the city administrator, and to some effect, the mayor, as a figurehead of the council. Future situations may occur. Future situations may occur whereby a previously approved contract or expenditure may require amendment that does not change the substance of what the council previously approved. And for efficiency reasons, mayor or city administrator may approve the amendment. If the city council wants to prevent such a situation at the time of initial approval, the council could specify that any change to the form of the agreement must it must be represented to the council for approval. And that is from the attorney, which recommends, as you've heard, that the motion for censure be denied or nigh even. So I just, I think it's important that we read this and understand that our attorney does not see any violation there. So go ahead. I'm turning myself off.
Brian, did you have something?
No, nothing.
Okay. Mayor Holston, if you don't have any more rebuttal or witnesses, we'll go into public comment. 9.1.4, public comment in favor or opposed?
We have one citizen here at the whack, if you're interested.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, Lauren Oak Ridge, we're going to start straight up. Thank you, Mayor, for the clarity on this issue. I appreciate it. It dispenses with a lot of frivolous erroneous information. On the periphery of this, I have experience in discussions on committees that I am. And it was claimed that not much of that contract was changed to make another issue in a long-term debate happen. Your lawyer again pointed that out. This was pointed out to us that we knew about this and it could go through, and I can defend it on that basis. Then, one interesting thing that will hang over as a dark cloud is the charter. Remember, charters are pretty much an open book. My interpretation at 7:00 PM is not necessarily the same interpretation at 7:00 AM. These things do matters. New ideas come across, various interpretations. I appreciate your time there. And I really recommend that you do not censor the mayor.
And Counsel Hollitt, you have another citizen, Dan Barkley, online.
Okay, go ahead, Dan Barkley.
His mute is on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good show. Gotcha.
Just a couple of points for counsel to consider. The issue at hand here is not the fiscal impact or Now, once something changed to let me get to the minute. And where this whole authority signature started back in June of 2018, and I have not personally seen the email, but Louie read an email from our city attorney dated the 5th of June 2018. And basically, it heard that the questions were out and kind of headed them off or so on, so forth. And according to the official minutes, that the attorney interprets different categories. Now, these categories are separated by commas. Commas are separators, so every comma identifies a different type of document signed. Okay? The mayor's authority documents only comes about once the council approves a matter. This is not an authority that rests independently with nutshell, the signature, Section 19 applies signature of the mayor to bond specifically. Mayor does not sign all contracts. The second question, what authority does the city administrator have where the appointment person, that's a different Okay? But what he says is that Section 19 requires that the mayor signs all contracts for the city, bonds for city officers, bonds for licenses, comma, contracts, and proposals and countersigns all orders of the treasury. And again, this is from the city attorney, our previous city attorney. Now, if you compare that to the narrative of the charter that is not unclear, that is not archaic, it is very specific. Upon approval of the council, the mayor shall sign all contracts, so on and so forth, separated by commas and contracted separated by comma. He even throws in general obligation bonds with ballot measures that don't appear in the charter. And whether it's archaic or unclear, which personally, I don't think there's anything unclear about upon consent of the council, the mayor shall sign all contracts, you know, et cetera. But the narrative used to support the former city administrator who took it upon himself to sign contracts without authority to do so because that rests with mayor and council or for members of council. He took it upon himself to start signing these contracts five years ago, six years ago, whenever, without council knowledge, without council consent, and actually had less restriction on signing contracts than the mayor has, which is ridiculous. If that's unclear, if there's something unclear about mayor shall sign all, I don't see where that's unclear. It might be unclear the way it's manipulated by city attorneys or so on and so forth. But shall is a mandatory must, you know, has a duty to perform things. It appears in the charter 50 lines. And if the charter says a certain person shall do this, that, or the other upon council consent, then until that changes by a vote of the citizens at the ballot box, not at the council meeting or a legal opinion, then that stands in council. All seven council members are sworn to uphold charter, which is direction and guidance to council and council and some staff specifically. It's not directed to citizens unless they're elected to council. That is a moral, ethical, legal contract between the citizens that wrote it and enacted it and council that has a sworn duty to uphold it. So that's kind of where the train left the tracks was back when, based on this legal opinion, that completely distorted the narrative of the charter. We started allowing
Mr. Barkley.
Time without mayor, without council approval. And that's where it went wrong. And I want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
No problem.
Thank you.
I'm gonna mute myself now so you don't hear my dogs.
Okay. Is there any more public comment? Brian?
I don't see any more, apparently.
Okay. We'll go into 9.1.5, council members' comments.
I have a comment, and I'm not quite sure. I don't know. To me, this whole thing is just very upsetting. And I'm sitting here, my stomach gets just nauseous listening to this whole thing, and I I feel like I feel like Kathy's right. I feel like it, I personally feel like it was personal. And I feel like this sort of thing stops us from moving forward. I agree that I feel like she was okay signing that contract. And our legal opinions does the same thing that I feel because Judy signed the original contract. And these were amendments, and there was really no monetary value to the city. And these contracts needed to be signed because we're trying to move forward with our TSB. And we've had so many discussions about moving forward and moving forward and moving forward, and signing them is part of moving forward. And I do feel like this was a personal attack. And I feel like it just stops us from moving forward as a council, and it slows everything down. And I just find it very disappointing and very saddening. And I don't know. I don't know. So I I'm sorry. I'm struggling with this because I feel like if we have a counselor that wants it like this, then you have to live by what you say. And, you know, I was at one point on the admin committee. And once I became a counselor, I was removed from that committee because I was on that committee as a citizen. And we've had all of our meetings about our our council rules and procedures. We've had discussions about this. So like, back in September, on September 19th, at our city council meeting, I stated that I believed we had four vacancies, one being Dawn's. And it was determined that we would talk about it later. And then it was widely discussed again in November. Yes.
With all due respect, I think that's a separate topic and we need to set stage
No, actually, it's not. No, it's not a different topic. It actually relates to this. So I feel that we have a counselor who has sat on a committee that was as a citizen seat and a council that sat on that committee without the authority of council. Right? And so I feel like if we're gonna have a counselor that's gonna attack somebody and move forward with this, you have to, if you're going to do that, I feel like you have to live the standard that you're trying to set. And I don't believe that that's happening, which that is why I believe that this is a personal attack. And that is exactly what makes me believe this is a personal attack. And so it's very disappointing. I find it very saddening. And, you know, I think we have great people on our council. I think we could do great things. But I think when we behave this way, we stop ourselves from moving forward. And I am extremely, extremely disappointed.
Okay. I would like to agree somewhat with Bobby and the mayor. And the thing of it is, this is not the first time. This is the second time. And I got this feeling that there's people that want to know, excuse me, everything, and they don't need to know everything. So thank you, you know, the council, yeah, but just, I just don't like the idea of it.
I've got something.
Go ahead, Counselor Maxfield.
Okay. Well, first with the admin committee thing, just to tie that off really quick. Now that those rules, council rules and procedures are actually enacted, Counselor Kenyon is no longer on the admin committee as a citizen. Okay, and then I guess, you know, I share the same sentiment as Bobby. You know, this also makes my stomach hurt a little bit. I think it's a difficult conversation. And I do understand where a lot of the distrust comes from, right? We've been at this for about a year now of trying to make progress and move forward. But as Mr. Barkley mentioned, you know, it stems and it roots from something that's been in our past. And trying to figure out how to move forward has been a little bit tough for us. And I think there's been some sticking points. But at the end of the day, I think that we've made a lot of progress. And so in many ways, I see both sides. But I also share the sentiment that it did not increase any of the money that was being spent. And if it's minute updates, then, to me, it doesn't seem as harmful. But that's where, if you have a council that isn't paying attention, you know, at what point does it turn into it being more than just a name within an amendment or et cetera? You know, so I guess I can see both sides of it. Yeah. I don't know. That's kind of my thoughts.
Is there any other counselors?
All right. I would agree with Counselor Maxfield. I do see both sides of it. I do strongly believe that we need to uphold the charter. And my personal opinion is that the charter says that the mayor cannot sign contracts without the council approval. And I think we have been over this topic so many times. And that I can think of, 99.9% of contracts have been going through the council. And council has been approving them before they go to the mayor's, before the mayor's signature. And I think it's really important that we do what we believe that the citizens are expecting us to do for that charter. However, I do believe that the attorney's opinion holds a lot of weight as well. And I do not believe that the mayor was trying to do anything nefarious or malicious. And I do believe that she was trying to keep business going. But I think as a council, we really need to discuss this. And I do think we all, council, including amendments, do need to go through the council because there are things that are caught in those in those contracts. And just having more sets of eyes on that is really important. And something that I may catch, you know, Counselor Whitney may not see, and vice versa. And yeah, so this is a really tough one for me as well. But in my opinion, it stands to show that we really need to work on our charter. And that's all I have to say.
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Point of order?
No.
Point of order?
Go ahead. Sorry.
Parties to this action have had their chance to comment. There'll be no comments further from the parties.
You're correct. Thank you.
John, you're muted.
I know. I was waiting to be recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. I'm not able to see the hands raised. So I just asked aloud if there was any more counselors. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't speak up sooner. I was waving my hand. I kind of get a hint of what you all had experienced in the past, and it seems to be reflecting here. I personally have to put a lot of weight on the attorney's opinion in the fact that the original document was approved by the council. There was no fiscal impact. There was no extension. And the fact that the mayor did, when the Second Amendment came, and it was actually changing the terms, the extension terms of the contract, brought that to council, tells me that she, one, has the best interests in mind, and two, that she moved appropriately with that because it was going to, or possibly, impact whether the council wanted to approve a longer extension or not. Anyway, so I'm just saying is if you, from a, somebody who hasn't gone through all of what you do and looking at it with my fresh set of eyes, I say that the city attorney and apparently past city attorneys have given the same information and rulings and whatnot, that I would give that a lot of weight. That's all I have to say.
Are there any more council comments? If there aren't any more council comments, we'll go to 9.1.6. Is there a motion for censure? I'll ask again, is there anyone to make a motion for censure? Hearing no motions. All right, can we go on to the next item?
I'm ready. Item 10. Okay, business from the city administrator. I'd like to give you a quick COVID update. Try to save some time here, but a lot of good news coming out of the state. They've set some criteria for reopening. I know that Lane County has officially asked the governor to be one of those counties considered to be open that start opening Phase 1 on the 15th of May. We have not heard back from the governor yet, whether that's happened. But today, I guess it was yesterday, the governor put out some very specific guidance for different types of businesses and what they would have to do in Phase 1. So it's, I put it on Facebook, the link's on Facebook, and pretty interesting read. We did have input to the county and then on to the state into those draft documents. I don't know that they took a whole lot of our advice, but we did get the opportunity to to say something. With that, I've asked our Public Works to reopen the east side of Green Waters Park tomorrow to kind of go along with what state parks have started to open. So they'll open up that gate and open up the restrooms and start to keep those clean and allow people to use that. So I ask you to take a look at all those documents. And it's still strongly encouraged that you distance and strongly encouraged that you wear a face covering when you're in public spaces. And so I would ask you to consider that as we go forward. With that, I'll ask if there's any questions on COVID-19 and our proceeding.
Yeah, is is Paul talking? I can't tell.
Yeah, no more group.
In Phase 1, that goes to 25.
25?
Yeah.
I think we, as council, need to be, need to be prepared in the community. Because my sense is that once, once we crack the door a little bit and we move into Phase 1, it's a steamroll. People are gonna think, oh, we're we're open. And one of the pieces of Phase 1 is if you cannot social distance, they strongly encourage you to wear a mask. So to that end, I would, I would like to see signs on a Green Waters Park's bathroom doors that said, that say, please wear a mask because you can't social distance in those bathrooms if we're gonna open them up. But I also think as counselors, I would just really challenge all of us to make sure that we comply. I know everybody has a, has their own personal opinion about whether masks are appropriate or not. This is something that that is asking that we, and I think it's an easy, it's an easy physical and visual to our community that, and my internet connection is unstable. It says, are you still hearing me? Can you still hear me? Yeah. So anyway, I would just encourage us all to to be good examples to the community as this opens up. And I think we're gonna get kind of snowballed really quickly.
Any other questions on COVID? Okay, then with mayor's permission, I'll move on to 10.1.2. That is the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program Decision. Proposed action is a motion to approve making this program available to Oak Ridge residents. Exhibits are the royalty agreement and a non-royalty agreement. You can have either one. So this was presented some time ago. Dennis Lyons came and actually spoke in person about the program. And it was, the matter was tabled for consideration. And so I'm bringing it back to kind of get a yes or a no, so we don't keep them on the hook, dangling on the hook forever. So it was brought March 5th and the decision was made to take it under consideration. Sample agreements were presented so you could guys could read through them. Fiscal impact is TBD because depending on what plan is chosen, the city would receive a licensing fee from the company, which has passed on the consumer through increased warranty fees if you choose the royalty program. It's an optional program for consumers, so they don't have to sign up for this program. Options are to make a motion to offer a royalty or non-royalty program to Oak Ridge residents or do not make the motion. We're recommending option one. It gives increased options for citizens, and they can always say no. And the motion is before you.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a question?
Yeah, I move we authorize utility service partners to offer the royalty slash non-royalty NLC service line warranty program to the city of Oak Ridge citizens.
Second.
Second was by Paul. Discussion councils?
I have a really quick question. Do we have to pick the royalty or the non-royalty? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so do we need to?
Yeah, we have to pick which way we want to go. So royalty, you know, we get a fee that gets sent to us and we choose to put it perhaps in the in the fund for the water to assist people to pay their bills. I mean, we can determine where that goes, or we could just put it in the general fund, or we can kick it back to the consumer. And it would reduce their fee by, you know, a few pennies.
So I guess can I make a friendly amendment to your motion, Counselor Whitney?
Okay.
I would just recommend doing the the royalty NLC service line warranty.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll accept that amendment.
Can we have a second?
Second.
You agreed a second? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, council. Jackie, please call for a vote, please.
Counselor Hollitt. Hi. Counselor Whitney?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Forcombe?
Aye.
Counselor McClelland?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, council. City administrator will reach out to to this company and the NLC service line warranty and let them know that we've passed this. So thank you for doing that. Let's move on. Where are we? Let's see. We are next, 10.2 department. Go ahead, for Brian, whoever is taking the lead.
Chief, you're up. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, one second before we start, chief. We forgot the added agenda item for me.
Oh, you have an add-in, 10.1.3. I'm sorry.
My knuckle.
10.1.3. Brian, will you come with that Franklin Boulevard support is?
Right. So we received a letter from Eugene Springfield asking for us to sign on as a, the mayor to sign on behalf of the city to support this grant they're seeking to do upgrades to the Franklin Boulevard. And it's come to you because we, the mayor would be signing on behalf of the city, not on, not as the mayor. I attached the letter to give you some idea of the project. But there wasn't any real specifics, like a plan or anything that they sent out. It was just a matter of, you're intending to improve Franklin Boulevard corridor. So this would be allow the mayor to sign the letter along with the other cities named in the letter in support of this grant. And staff recommends option one, which is to make the motion to support the request, and the motion's before you.
I got a motion. All right, I move we authorize the mayor to sign the letter on behalf of the city of Oak Ridge according to Franklin Boulevard Opportunities on Corridor Build Application.
My second.
Second. Okay, Bobby and Paul both seconded. Is there any any further discussion? I can, I can say a few words about this. This has come up in some of our mayor's meetings. Springfield is, has a, has a really large master plan to take care of Franklin Boulevard and add hotels, a conference hotel to the area. And what that does is give us the opportunity to do events out in the outlying areas and people will be able to to travel back. And so getting support from all the communities around for such a big piece is is really important to the cities in Springfield when they go to, when they go to put in for big grants and things like that. So that hence why they reach out to us because we indirectly will benefit from the tourism. So any other, any other questions? If none, then will you do a vote for us? Call for a vote?
Counselor McClelland? Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Forcombe?
Aye from Forcombe, aye from Forcombe and aye from McClelland.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
That passed. Thank you very much. Okay, 10.1.3 is done. Move to 10.2, correct? Okay, please permit.
Hello, can everybody hear me? I'll go down the list here of the stuff that people ask questions about and also the stuff on the agenda there. The measures to reduce speeding, the mayor already talked about. We've had the sign posted around, the speed sign, we've been putting it on different streets around town. We've had citizens call in and request that be put on their streets, so we kind of just have a list for that. We want to do similar thing on the highway eventually with a sign we purchased, whether it's a hard line or a radar sign. ODOT has to approve that. I've been back and forth some with the ODOT person that's in charge of that for, I believe it's called our district. So that's ongoing process. See. I can get enough marked patrol cars running all the time and the COVID things relax. We're gonna look for volunteers to park a marked patrol car in different places on the highway, certain city streets. So that'll be another thing. We have to wait for volunteers so the officers. Am I sounding like a chipmunk because I'm getting more feedback?
We can, we can still make it out, proceed.
Okay. So if there's any questions on that, the speed measures?
I have a question. Does that sign actually track the data? Are you guys able to see that on the backend? Or is it more just for records?
That that sign is just visual awareness. It's, we were, we were donated that sign by Carlton PD, the chief there donated that to me. He had it donated by another PD. It appears it's, or someone had smashed it with a baseball bat and it didn't work after that. But a local citizen got it working, so it's been nice for us. It's a very expensive piece of equipment. They're $10,000 to $14,000 and we got it for free and got it fixed for free. So that one does not do data. The ones that I've been looking at for also moving around, but it's a little different because it goes on a post. So we can even move that. It's, the rules are very strict for the highway. On the city streets, they're a little less strict. That one will be, that one will be able to track data, so that will be able to track speed data.
Perfect. Thank you.
So then I can assume that the word that people have already gotten tickets based on that is false.
Yes, no, that does not issue tickets.
Okay, I was actually told that today. Any other comments from council about this? Okay, go ahead, chief. Oh, Bobby, I see a hand wave.
I just thought whoever it is that repaired that, tell them thank you.
Yes, yes.
And I will thank you for the city too. Is there anything?
Sorry, was Dylan inbound, right, to fix that sign?
Yes.
It was indeed. Okay, so what about your department moved to the OIP?
Well, the department moved to the OIP. I had somebody do a quote. He's not returned the quote yet. In talking with the city administrator, that was probably something we should wait until after November before we look at anything further on that. That's just, that's more my train of thought, is we see what happens in November. And then we get back to that if we get a pass levy. One big thing is, this will be a bill thing, question for Bill too, but if the USDA allows us to use OIP funds to refurbish that building somewhat for us. Otherwise, I do not know where the funds would come from unless we were seeking outside sources like your grant or something.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Rick Weimhold, I see your hand up, but I'm not gonna recognize any members of the public until public comment.
Mayor, one one comment on the move to OIP. So with all the capital improvements and those kind of big projects, staff and I sat down and we we laid them all out on the table and racked and stacked them and kind of lined them up and then went through the priority after we got bloody about what the priorities were and then had to draw the cut line somewhere. So that's where the the move is. It moved below the cut line, but it's very close to that. So if we do manage to get some relief, it would, we would do some refurbishment to the building to allow them to move in.
Okay. All right, that sounds.
And then I could talk to 873.
Yes, please do.
Part of it, part of that is I have have a little bit of draft language done already. Part of that's been a waiting game. We had initial intent to meet with the municipal judge, the city prosecutor and myself. Since the whole COVID thing happened, that's kind of been put behind. And as the city administrator said before, also the intent of the municipal judge on what his further actions will be.
Okay.
So working on that. That's a conversation to have with the prosecutor. He's gonna be giving it, the city prosecutor's gonna be giving us some training in the next couple of weeks. And we'll have some conversation about that ordinance as well. And then also, as far as ordinance go, city prosecutor and I have, he's been talking to some of the officers, but we've talked as well about, may, it may come down to charter change and then some new ordinance to help us with a lot of nuisance problems that we have where we need what's called administrative warrants. And so that's also a conversation we're having about what we need to do and what the city and city council needs to do to help us out with that.
Okay, you anticipate when you might be able, you think you'll be able to have something to us by the end of the summer or in another month or, and I know there's so much going on that it's hard to be.
The, as far as the, a replacement for 873, I anticipate that as soon as we can get together and have some face-to-face, we could probably get that done, so.
Okay, all right. And then also Neighborhood Watch.
So Neighborhood Watch, I would have Sergeant McPherson, Counselor Hollitt and Counselor Kenyon back me up on that. At the last meeting they had with Neighborhood Watch, I wasn't involved in that. And we kind of slowed down after that meeting, and one of them can maybe speak to it better than I can.
I'd be happy to.
Go ahead, please.
At our last meeting, we were planning a, a community, what were we gonna call it, Chrissy? It was gonna be where we would invite all of the community and talk about the program and how to get people involved.
It was a kickoff meeting.
Kickoff meeting.
Early April, but with the COVID stuff, it kind of prevented any of that happening.
Yeah, we are, we're not able to have a meeting like that.
Okay, so would you, would you recommend that we just put this on hold until we're at a point where we can have a community meeting about this? Or do you want to try to? Or do you want to try to pursue this informational in some other way?
Well, personally, I think we could maybe get some information from Carrie Carver down in, in the valley, because I know they already have literature made up that maybe we could push out either on bulletin boards, in the newspaper or on social media to encourage people on their own to form Neighborhood Watch groups. But there again, how much are people going to want to get together with their neighbors in this current situation that we have?
Right.
You know, I don't, I don't know.
Chrissy, what are your thoughts on that?
Sorry, it's awfully dark in the room, it's hard to turn the video off. I think it's really difficult not being able to do face-to-face stuff and especially for, you know, the type of event we were planning to do, a kickoff where everybody could kind of meet and greet, go over safety stuff for, for houses and it just, it puts quite the damper in all of that. Not to say it doesn't need to happen, but.
That's true. That's true. Okay. Well, Michael, do you also agree that this might be something we put on hold until we're ready to, until we can gather people actually together again to talk about it and do a training?
I think so. I think, you know, we're going to have the most success when we get to have that personal interaction. And we also talk, you know, as kind of a secondary to that kickoff as having a table at National Night Out, which I think is the fourth of August this year. And that, you know, will be.
When is that again?
Four, August four. Yeah, it's the first Tuesday of August.
All right. Hopefully we, we can all be together. All right, well, thank you for that update. Yes, that would be awesome. Thank you for the update. Appreciate that.
I have one other thing, thing on that. I have, I have resources if people want to come and kind of start it on their own, we can help and point them in the right direction. So maybe Michael will remind me or I'll remind Michael, we could put another post up on our Facebook page to see if people would be interested in contacting us and starting little, you can have a group of one to start with as far as the, the literature from Neighborhood Watch.
Okay. Okay.
Good idea.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Oh, I just, good idea, Chief, thank you.
Okay. Good. So I just wanted to add one thing to COVID. I, I got contacted by a community member today who, and Chrissy, she may have reached out to you, did you get a phone call before council? It's a, it's an individual in the community who usually picks up food boxes and can't pick up anymore because of capacity and because of Lain County.
No.
Did you talk to her?
No.
Okay. Okay, so maybe you and I can chat. Evidently, a councillor posted on Facebook that they would be willing to pick up some boxes for me.
That was me.
It was you.
To do that, but nobody contacted me.
Okay, well, I have a contact for you, I'll get ahold of you after the meeting, okay?
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So let's move on to 11, a report for board commission, committee, admin committee and Tricia.
Hold on, can you hold on now for a second? If you're talking about picking up food boxes from the food room, I have release forms that if somebody needs to sign them, that would allow somebody to pick up a food box for them. I personally have some, so if you guys need that one.
I printed a bunch off the internet also too. They showed me where it was on the internet, so I printed them off. Chrissy, I can talk about this individual's problem.
Okay. Okay.
And would you want to help too, Dawn, if, if we need it?
I do, but what I wanted to point out is that the post on Facebook was regarding the food that's coming to the high school on Fridays, not normal food box, and I don't think any forms required.
No, the form is required. That's food for Lain County, they'll be there 4:30 to 6:30 and the form is only if you're picking it up for someone else.
Oh, oh, I see.
Yeah, so, so there's that.
Okay.
Sweet. Okay, let's move on then. Tricia, would you like to take the lead on the admin?
Yes. Okay, so just a little bit of background, I'm actually going to try to share my screen really quick.
Okay.
If it will let me. Of course, I'm going to do this. Okay, well, I'll try to talk while I'm fixing these system preferences. Okay, never mind. Okay, I can't, I don't think I can share it. Okay, so Brian sent out the committee recruitment strategy that kind of outlines the way that we could go about getting more folks on our committees and having a little bit more structure in the way that we approach filling vacancies. So for context, we just looked at resolutions which are going to open up a bunch of different seats for residents, so citizens. And with that in mind, I thought, well, instead of just filling those seats hastily, maybe we could think a little more strategically in how we do that. And I will say, both councillor Kenyon and councillor Hollitt helped me fill this out, which was really great. I wanted to get it in front of you guys first, just so I could make sure that I'm going in the right direction and before taking it to admin committee. That way we just save a little bit of time considering that we're kind of in the full swing of things. I'm kind of bummed I can't share this with you. I'm wondering.
Hang on councillor, I think I can have to.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just read, or I just downloaded software on my computer, so it wants me to like restart my whole system in order to be able to share.
If you can share it now, I had to enable it.
I still can't because I downloaded software, so, oh wait, okay, maybe. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
That's awesome.
Okay, so like I said, they helped me out, which is great. I'm already seeing a little, a couple of formatting issues, so just ignore that. So table contents introduction, again, I'm going to try to keep this brief because I know we're going to run out of time. And then an overview of like the strategy, what I think we could do and then kind of committee information and then the resources that we could use to actually implement the strategy. So this is a pretty generic statement right here. And hopefully you guys had time to read this. It is a pretty dense document and this will not be the last time that you see it, so don't feel bad if you didn't get around to it. So the recommendation here would be that we have recruiting events that happen two times per year. It doesn't need to be anything significant, it could be a pretty much like a town hall scenario where people come for an hour and those committee chairs or, or probably actually the councillor on that committee, I guess it could just be a representative voted on by the committee to come give a quick presentation on the committee, why people should sign up and an example of that would be quarter one in, in January, we post the vacancies, we conduct the outreach and then we host the recruiting event. And there's actually resource documents on all of these. So this is something too that I wanted to talk to you guys about before I bring those resolutions back to you, is actually having seats per each resolution for our committee.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. And I was kind of very confused about these seat limits. I don't know that we actually need to like run these out 10 years, but it really helped me in thinking through how we would fill those seats through the next, you know, 12 years. That being said, I could probably use a little bit of feedback on, you know, 120 to 1222 and then it jumps to 123. I don't think that's how we set up our council seats, but to me it seemed confusing to have someone starting, you know, going from 2020 to 2022 and then the next person, we don't have to get into the weeds on it, but if anybody has any feedback on how to make this not make my brain hurt, that'd be great. So I guess I would, I would look for consensus from the council to add that to the resolutions before I bring them back to you. I don't think we need a motion or anything like that, but I don't want to have a scenario where we have to jump back and forth between, oh, we need to update this and then we can vote on it.
I think it's great to have all the seats, I really appreciate that because it becomes difficult as people on and off of it to be able to label a seat and say, okay, you're in seat one and if you leave, the person who comes to replace you is taking seat one.
Yes.
So much easier.
Yeah, the thought there is, is very much that as a councillor, you know the way that councillor Kenyon was brought on, she will not be filling councillor Hadley's whole four years, it's just until the next turning cycle, so.
Right, right.
So, I guess, does anybody, is anybody opposed to me adding this language to the resolutions? It might look a little different than this, but actually having seats, no, I think it's great.
It's great.
Okay. And up here. Okay, so then, another part of the strategy would be outreach letters and then these recruiting events, and I can show you a little bit more what those will look like down in resources. So then here we have committee information, this is where I'll need kind of the councillor's input on, you know, this, essentially it would be like an RFP, like we're kind of looking for this candidate for this position in the same way that someone who was trying to fill a seat for a job would send out like a, this is kind of what we're looking for, here's your responsibilities, all of that, because I know that there are people in our community who, who are wondering, you know, what is my time commitment going to be to this? What will the, the work look like? And some of this is generic across all the different resolutions, so, you know, budget committee, we know that there's going to be more meetings in the, the front end of the year.
Right. Right. You know, I looked through all of these and, and I know you're trying to compress your time, the only thing I saw is I was looking through all of the different committee things that I wanted to make a comment on was this target professionals.
Yeah.
I think the desired skills is really good, but the target professionals, I think, is a, I, I found it difficult to wrap myself around because it lifts the pool much and it makes people look at it and go, oh, well, I've never done anything to do that.
Yeah.
You know, I, that's just my opinion, it, it made me uncomfortable and I looked at it, so I'm open to discussion on that too. But that's just my input.
Can I make a comment on that since we're right there? I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Trish, but isn't this document intended for council to look at when they are considering applicants?
Yes. I think it's a little of both. I think more the strategy part is for internal council and then this can be attached to the vacancy that we put out, that way people who might be interested in that committee can know exactly, you know, the time commitment, examples of the project, you know, the purpose of the committee. But with that being said, you know, the reason why I put this here is because it is sometimes hard to look at these more nebulous ideas of like, oh, problem solving, well, that could be anything, right? But it's more so like who's going to be doing the job that the administrative advisory's going to be doing, you know, developing reports and evaluation forms or, you know, whatever it might be. I definitely hear what you're saying, Kathy, and that's something that even councillor Kenyon had mentioned when she was working through this as well. So I'm trying to figure out how we can still make sure that we kind of have a scope of what we're looking for, whether that is like buffing out these desired skills to match more of these positions. But yeah, definitely, you know, for the admin committee, it's definitely people who can, you know, get on the computer, look at what other cities are doing, come back, share that information, you know, helping to buff out resolutions or strategies or, you know, familiarity with Microsoft Office, et cetera.
I think you can scout the desired skills and take off target professionals, you know, for, I mean about admin, you know, someone who is into, and, and development also has the desired skills for admin because as timeline goes, you know, they, how to construct documents and, and that type of thing. So it's, it's such a big, large thing that I think it, I, I think we could maybe work at putting more skills in that help explain what it is we're looking for, but.
No, I, I like that too. I think for me, I will just need help buffing that out and I'm not sure how to do that. I mean, I guess I can ask my committee to help out, but I do think we do kind of have a time crunch. We won't dive into it too much here, but I'm, I, I guess I would just, maybe I'll send it out to, to other councillors that can help me buff those out. You might, you might be one of those, Kathy.
I'm willing to help with that as well.
Okay.
And we did talk about that, I think it was councillor Kenyon that was a little concerned that the target professional things on there might, you know, make a person feel like they're not qualified.
But we did all agree that that was why it was a really good idea to put that asterisk in there and say that it's ideal but not required.
Exactly. I was trying to think, get the words. Exactly.
Okay. I guess what we could do too is actually research job descriptions for these positions and kind of get a better idea of what it is that they do, that would also help us on our committee. And I will say, I kind of took this, commit, this recruitment idea from a board recruitment strategy that I found online.
I, I recognize that.
Yeah. Okay. And then I think, you know, again, just buffing this out a little bit more, I do want to show you guys these resources and then I will conclude. And this is too where like a help from you, Bobby, would be really great because I'm not totally sure what, you know, parks have done and then I'm also, yeah. We can, we can hash that out later. Okay, so then down here at resources, you guys can see here, I already listed the seats that are going to be available on my committee as soon as we pass these resolutions and I think at some point, well, here very soon, I, I'm going to need all of the councillors to check in with their committees and tell me what seats are actually available so that when we do implement those resolutions, we, we know full and well how many seats are available and who's going to sit in what seats, because right now I have a seat that, you know, was filled in 2018 but is going to end in 2020, so they'll come off at the end of the year. But that might be perfect for someone, they might say, you know, I don't know that I want to do a full three years, but one year sounds great or two years. Okay, and so this would actually go out with those committee vacancies, that way it's all in one place, people can, can say, I'm really interested in, you know, two different committees that I'll apply for. Okay. Sorry, I'm really buzzing through this, so feel free to stop me if you have questions or contact me afterwards. Okay, so then this recruiting event, this is a very generic example agenda and it could look like any, anything, you know, this could even be a webinar that we put together. So it'd be a quick welcome and then, you know, five minutes per committee presentation and then a Q and A session, but then also have like tabling of the different committees that, that way you could go talk one-on-one with those committees. And then here's an outreach letter, so once you post those vacancies, you can ask for referrals from the community and send out a letter or an email or a phone call, that way, you know, most people like hearing from someone, that way it feels a little more personal and they might be more inclined to volunteer. And then from there we have appointing com, committee members. So again, this is where you would review the, the committee information notably like the ideal candidate section, that way when we're looking at through these committee applications, we're saying, what does this committee really need? And then, you know, actually giving an informational packet to those committee members, the same meeting that they're appointed, so they have a welcome letter, they have a code of conduct, they have the resolution from their committee, bylaws if they're applicable and the public meeting information and maybe other relevant information to that committee. Okay, I'm done. Any questions?
Very nice. Good job. You did a great job. So let me ask, what is it you would like from us? I see your hand, I miss when you want to.
Yeah.
So what is it you want from council right now?
Okay, well, first and foremost, I really needed that clarification on adding seats, so I appreciate that, that will help me move forward with those solutions. And then I think, obviously, we can't all work on this together without being in, in one setting. I think what I'll do is, this will run by the admin committee on Tuesday and then potentially, I guess I would ask you guys what you want. Do you want us more time to actually sit down and work through this together and discuss it or? Or would you rather me try to make all the updates and then come back?
You know, I think, you know, we've been at this for a while and I think we don't need to knock the ball around too much more. I think we can recognize that as.
Oh, where'd she go?
She's been canceled.
Uh-oh.
There she is.
Well, I don't know what happened, but that was weird. Anyway, it's a living document and it's going to have changes as it moves. But I would love to see you make the changes that you and you reach out to and then bring it back to where at that point. How do you feel about it?
I think that's good. I do think that's good. I think maybe the next step that I'll have is actually reaching out to the committees and saying what seats you have that are vacant so that once we do have vacancies, we can move forward pretty quickly.
Then for the committee.
What was that, Kathy? I think you cut out a little bit.
Okay. So review.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to approach it considering I can't have a serial meeting. So it might just be me sending out an email saying to send vacancies to Brian. So it won't just be vacancies, but it'll be seats, what seats are available on your committee.
Um, and can you hear me? So I guess what I can tell you is. I sent you a chat. Can you, anybody hear me?
No.
So Chrissy, Brian, go for it. My question is not being happy.
Okay, we'll shift to let Counselor Hollitt preside.
Okay. What part are we at?
We're on 10.2, which is just that we're going down through the committees and then roll call and see if they have anything.
Audit committee hasn't met, so next would be 10.3 Budget Committee.
They just finished their job for the year, so they're good to go.
Okay, so no report for Budget Committee? Or actually, we could give the date on when the hearing is for that.
May 21st at 6:00 PM.
Okay, May 21st. Next one would be 10.4 Community Services Committee, Counselor Whitney.
I don't have anything because I was not at the last meeting, but if Rick's on, maybe he does.
No, it was nothing really to report. It was just updates on where we are with, and discussed Emma's stuff a bit.
Okay, 10.6 ODAC, and I don't believe ODAC has had a meeting. Next would be 10.7 Planning Commission.
And Planning Commission has not had a meeting either due to COVID.
10.8 Public Safety.
That we, it's been a little while since we have, we're waiting on the resolutions and stuff for them. Try to go with the full committee.
Okay.
I have, I do have a question.
This is not public comment. This is not public comment time.
Are you speaking about ODAC, Mr. Wyman?
Yeah, it's about ODAC. My question is, are you guys planning on taking this to each of the committees to go over this before you go implementing it?
Implementing what?
These changes.
No. These are council. Is there any other counselors that have comment on that? Okay, 10.8.
He spoke, yeah.
10.9 RTMP Committee.
They haven't met.
All right. Last thing on the agenda is 13.1, is that correct? Ordinance is amending the procedures for public contracting. I'll let Brian take that one.
Okay, this is 13.1 and this is the first reading of ordinance to amend the Oak Ridge Procedures for Public Contracting. The exhibits of the proposed ordinance and the ordinance attachment. The proposed council action is the motion to read by title only. This is a ordinance which repeals 837 and amends Oak Ridge City policies relating to procedures for public contracting by adopting, except as herein specified, the state of Oregon public contracting requirements. So in layman's terms, it sets, it sets up rules for how the city staff procures items and it's only stuff that's unique to the city. Everything else would be done in accordance with the ORS. So there are some changes that we made. Basically lowered thresholds on purchasing authority for the staff just because considering the size of our budget. It was a template used off the League of Oregon City's website and I modified that and used it. No fiscal impact. Your options are to read the ordinance by title only or read the ordinance and the attachment in full, which might take some time. The recommendation is, staff recommends option one. One thing to note is a counselor brought forward, a counselor that has been here a while said there might actually be in existence a 2012 timeframe procurement manual, public policy contracting manual. I couldn't find one in the files, but it's a task for me to go back and see if there's any history of passing a document like that because if that's the case, we would have already have canceled that particular ordinance, 837. We'd have to cancel the ordinance that were, that is not found. So with that, the motion is before you. And also, the city attorney was, I think he still is, in attendance. If you have questions, specific questions about the public contracting, yes, he's here.
I actually have a question. I believe this topic came up quite a while ago about Oregon public contract or purchasing. Ooh, now that I look at that, maybe it didn't. I'm thinking, I'm thinking, never mind.
So Brian, are you comfortable with moving ahead with this until you go back and research about the 2012 information that may exist or whatever?
Yes, ma'am. So this was a, we got dinged by the auditor on this because he did not have a current public contracting policy. So I reached out and I said, we have one and it's, you know, dated way back in 2000 something. And she says, well, you need a new one. And even if it's just a policy that refers to the ORS. So that's what drove me to it. In my mind, all we have to do is continue with this process and if we have to change the ordinance that we're appealing, then we'll do that. But the attachment itself is fine.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes, quick.
Brian, I was able to find the actual thing that happened in council and as it turns out, it was a resolution, not a ordinance. So you could see it as resolution 04-2011 in your history, if you have that.
Okay, that's great.
Good job, Counselor Kenyon. Thank you. All right, so can we have a motion then?
Sorry, I move we approve the reading of the proposed ordinance by title only.
Second.
Second.
All seconded. Any additional comments?
No, that was a great catch by Dawn. Sorry, I said that was definitely a great catch.
Jackie, go ahead and call for a vote.
Counselor Maxfield.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Forcombe.
Aye.
Mayor Holston.
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney.
Aye.
Counselor McClelland.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Rick, I think we're at the end. Rick, do you, did you have any public comment that you wanted to make? I've seen your hand waving over there.
No, originally, well, originally when I waved my hand, it was because I do a lot of work with Zoom and I noticed that a lot of the feedback is coming from Chrissy's microphone. She's, I think her, Chrissy's speakers must be too close to her microphone. So she's picking up, her microphone's picking up you guys talking and you, when you talk, you see her screen flashing. And then at the same time, you hear the feedback. And I only know this because I spend hours on Zoom every day. And it's something to take a look at.
I appreciate that. I thought it was just Chrissy's sparkly personality because I kept seeing the yellow lines surrounding her picture.
Yeah, no, it's because her speakers picking up, her microphone is picking up people talking.
Well, thank you for that tip. I appreciate it. Is there any?
Actually, wait just a minute. I don't have speakers with me and my thing was on mute just now and it's been on mute. I have no speakers with me at all. I'm on my phone, so that can't be possible.
Well, if you, if you watch the screen, if everybody just watches the screen, when Brian's talking or somebody else is talking, you will see the yellow around Chrissy's screen is flashing. So it's picking it up. It's picking up something in your office or wherever you're at.
Well, see what we can do. All right, thank you, everyone. Is there any comments, counselors, that you wanted to make before we close that?
We have one more public comment if we accept it.
Absolutely, please.
Yeah, Mayor, it's Lauren again. I want to say I feel for the council, the administration, staff. You guys, sometimes somebody rises up with a, whatever they have going on in their brain and tries to make a true reality of it and it's nothing more than a frivolous attempt at antique. And I feel for you guys. Even though the appointee has no conscience about this, maybe you can talk to the appointee and say, you are only appointed, lady. You have no guarantees here at all. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, if there are no further comments, then.
Mayor, if I could just real quick.
Yes, Matt, please. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, of course. I just wanted to make sure and just echo what Brian said. I'm happy to go through any portions of the policy. If any specific counselor had a question or wanted a little bit more detail. I'm here. If you have questions, let me know.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And Brian, I really appreciate you jumping on the ball and taking care of what the audit recommendation was so that we did have an updated policy and I'm not sure what it's called, manual procurement, no, manual to use for our community and guidance. So I appreciate that a lot. Dawn, I see, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I just remembered one thing. I wanted to make a comment on that particular topic. I'd like to see if I could, the original ordinance, 837, as well as now the resolution 04-2011. Wonder if Brian could send those out to us.
Sure, I'm sure he can, he can make them available to us so that you can take a look at them. Bobby, I saw your fingers wiggling. Were you waving?
Yeah, yeah, so I keep thinking about our discussion about the sensor and I just want to say that I really appreciate that Counselor Hollitt and Trisha both were very well spoken because I was having a hard time putting my thoughts into words. But I also wanted to say that even though it's difficult and awful and it felt horrible, I do appreciate that Counselor Kenyon has the courage to bring something like that forward. I think we all need to have the courage to say and call somebody out when we think they're wrong. Regardless to how I felt and how I feel, I do appreciate the courage that she had to do what she felt was right.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Any other comments?
Sorry, I just want to say I also, you know, I don't want Dawn to feel bad about anything either. I think that at the end of the day, Dawn does her digging and, you know, more than anyone, she loves seeing everything and likes being in the know and everything. And I can't blame her for wanting to see and have read everything for herself.
Thank you, Counselor Maxfield. And I would agree, we all need to know as much as we possibly can. I would also caution us that it's important that we do it with respect and it's also important that we understand that we all have various opinions and interpretations are open to interpretation and give us, each of us the grace to interpret things in our own manner and the wisdom to come together and find consensus. That's what being on council is all about. So thank you, everybody, and this meeting is adjourned. Okay. Thank you.